I call this meeting to order. My roll call show that all council members are present except Councilman Hatch, who has been excused. We welcome those in attendance tonight and those who are watching on Sholo TV or on an electronic device. Tonight, I will be giving the invocation and I'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Haley Heath. Those who would like to join, please rise.
I pledge allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you that we're able to gather together for the city council meeting. And we thank you for the opportunity we have as a student council to come in and see how the city government runs. And we ask you to please bless that you will be with us tonight during this meeting. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is called to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not scheduled on the agenda may do so at this time. The city council cannot discuss or act to any items presented during the call to the public. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing no one move forward, we close call to the public and move to special events. Tonight, Mr. Brimhall will introduce Sholo Public Library's new manager, Tamara Norwood.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and students. My pleasure to introduce you to our new library services manager, Tamara Norwood. It's, um, gosh, is it your second week?
Third.
Third week? Time goes fast and we're glad she's here. When, real quick story before we let her introduce herself. Right after Lisa had our previous library services manager announce, we talked about her going and taking another position in Florence. Um, we had some interviews set up for a different position and Tamara came in and she interviewed for that position. And very, very shortly after the interview started, Lisa and I looked at each other. And I think our, our faces said the same thing and we confirmed that after the interview, which went an hour, by the way. That, that the lady standing next to me is very powerful and she is extremely intelligent and she knows what she's doing. And I think we're in very capable hands. So I'd like to present to you Tamara Norwood and ask her to introduce herself.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. My name is Tamara. Um, I just came to the Sholo Library. Most recently, I was managing the library in Maricopa. Um, a little bit similar situation. The population's a little bigger, but, um, the libraries are essentially about the same size. The services are same. We had a very unique, um, um, community there too, that we tried to pay a special attention to, to make sure that we were serving them. Making sure that we recognized their needs and then fulfilled those. That's my intention here as well. I am so happy to be in this town. Thank you so much for the opportunity to work there. I'm very happy. Can I answer any questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brimhall and Ms. Norwood. Next, we will have a presentation by four students, Lauren Joan, Brody Garvin, Max Frund, Lenora Bernier, and myself, who attended the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference. So we were given the opportunity to go down and visit the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference as student representatives for the city of Sholo. So one offering of the League of Cities is they offer cities to go send their youth councils down and learn from, they bring down various motivational speakers and people in government to come and kind of teach the next generation what it's like to be involved in Arizona government and that sort of thing. Uh, we have a brief slideshow ready and just a few present, um, little synopsis from each of the presenters.
Great. So our first presenter mainly talked about differences in self-esteem and how, um, it fluctuates throughout your life and how your self-image isn't necessarily based on what you think of yourself, but what you think others think of yourself. Um, he talked about how it's important to find people to be able to listen to like anything you may have to say so that you're able to like air your grievances. Um, and to find ways to reduce stress. Like he shared a lot of different tips about like what's during a panic attack. Um, like how to reduce stress as a whole, like deep breathing exercises and like, um, continued sleep and everything. Um, and all of these were like made so that it showed us how to become inspired and continue going with what we're doing right now.
So the next lecture that was given was building grit and how to get through tough times. So one of them that was given was fight, flight, or freeze. This was like the three main human reactions that are given during a tough situation. And, um, talking about how the main, the main, um, reaction is like flight. Um, others, other points of view. So this, um, was discussing about how other people feel and how to get through times at childhood. Like, they say most, most of the tough times come at like, um, childhood. That's what he said mainly. And your parents teach a lot through different ways and that can affect you in a bad way or a good way. So you can learn how to be calm from your parents. But he also advised doing the five, four, three, two, one, um, countdown, which I think is very helpful. So when you're in a very tough situation, just count five, four, three, two, one. Your mind will be a lot, it'll be a lot easier to think. So that's building grit.
So for one of the things that like Kale said, there were a lot of other student councils and mayor councils at the, um, conference. And, um, they just help the mayor with things that they need to do in the city. And a lot of them were trying to find activities for the youth to do in like their small towns and communities. Um, and just that kind of stuff.
Then the last presenter was, uh, his topic was communicating in digital space. His name was Adam Brooks. He works for a public speaking company. They contracted him out and he came and talked to us about how to be better communicators. He talked about how people are always communicating, whether you're consciously doing it or not. Um, such as like from your body language to what you say, to the tone of voice you say it in. And to just help people be more conscious of that, especially when communicating in, uh, like more formal setting. Um, he also stressed one word throughout the course of his, um, talk and it was next. Uh, so it's, life is short. Don't waste your time with certain people who aren't worth it. So next, next person, he used like a social dating app as an example for this. And then, um, he also talked about striving to be your own best. So he used the example, he used to work at a ADA compliant, um, summer camp. So they would have children with disabilities would come out and spend a week during the summer there. And so despite their limitations, they would always strive to push themselves beyond, uh, whether it be their ADA compliant rock wall or they had all kinds of activities like horseback riding and just always strive to be your best. And then, um, we were also able to be involved in carrying the flag of Sholo for the presentation of a flag ceremony. So every, every city in town in attendance of this event, they have a flag and they present. We were fortunate enough to be able to carry that for the city of Sholo. And then the other picture there is us in the State Farm Stadium in Glendale, Arizona. So after the conference was over, they offered us a tour of the stadium. We got to go in and see the ins and outs of how that stadium runs and how they're preparing for the Super Bowl this coming year. So once again, we'd like to thank the council for sending us this phenomenal experience. Are there any other questions?
No, but I definitely got to have a comment. Um, it was pretty awesome to watch you guys carry that flag in there. It, I know you guys, the student council's been doing it for years, but the best part of the whole thing is I know a lot of the other mayors in our state and they came up to me and wanted to know how that they could get their students involved. So I, I actually told them to contact Councilman Alsop because I really didn't know how that all started. But I think it's, it's awesome to watch you guys do it. It makes me proud to watch you carry that flag in. So thank you guys. It did an awesome job.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Uh, does any council member wish to pull off an item for discussion? Calendar we have, uh, consideration of a proclamation for Constitution Week, authorization to purchase a 10-wheel dump truck, acceptance of a grant, uh, from Governor's Office of Highway Safety, Resolution Number R 2022-18, and city council minutes for August 16th regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
For Councilman Clark, I move to approve the counselor calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
I am seconding the motion for Councilman Judd.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. We'll now have the city clerk, Ms. Hall, read the proclamation aloud.
Thank you. Whereas we, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America to secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our prosperity. And whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions, principles, and meaning of the constitution so they can support, preserve, and defend it against encroachment. And whereas we must always remember those who rest and sacrifice their lives to protect our freedoms and honor those who stand ready to take action every day to defend our nation, both here and abroad. And whereas the 235th commemoration of the adoption of the U.S. Constitution on September 17th, 1787, provides a historic opportunity for all Americans to learn about and to reflect upon the rights and privileges of citizenship and its responsibilities. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week to commemorate the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas the people of the city of Sholo, Navajo County, Arizona, do enjoy the blessings of liberty, the guarantee of Bill of Rights, equal protection of the law under the constitution, and the freedoms derived from, from it. Now therefore, John Leach, Jr., Mayor, on behalf of the city of Sholo, does hereby join our state and nation and proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week in the city of Sholo and invites every citizen and institution to join in the national commemoration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Um, next item under new business is consideration of award to contract for West McNeil Roadway Improvements, City of Sholo Project R-2922, and authorization of associated budget transfers. Mr. Hemesseeth.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, students. Uh, city's fiscal year 2022 capital improvements plan budget includes a total of $540,000 for a roadway improvement project labeled West McNeil, Fox Canyon, Deuce Club. Scope of work includes installing approximately 2,700 linear feet of new ribbon curb, replacing 5,500 square feet of deteriorating sidewalk, installing new Americans with Disabilities or ADA sidewalk ramps and the required drainage for the improvements. Uh, the project also includes pulverizing the existing roadway section, installing a new four-inch thick asphalt overlay. The proposed improvements are located along West McNeil, between Fox Canyon subdivision and the Deuce Club in Sholo. Uh, the project was designed by Ironside Engineering, our consultant, with a construction estimate, uh, cost estimate of $605,000. The project was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Western Grade LLC at $614,923.27, PAP LLC at $652,335.01, and Perkins Diner Incorporated at $782,841.60. Uh, staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the West McNeil Roadway Improvements, City of Sholo Project Number R 2922, to Western Grade LLC in that amount not to exceed that $614,923.27 and authorize the associated budget transfers for work. Uh, the bid tabulation, um, is attached and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hemesseeth. Are there any questions from the counselor staff?
Okay, I, uh, when is this thing, this project going to start? Is it going to be finished by the end of the year or are we going to have some road detours and everything else from while we're putting this thing together?
Um, the good news is the contractor right now, who's doing the paving work on Fifth, Fourth, Eighth, and Sixth in there that all touched West McNeil, got the project and they're ready to go and have the pre-construction next weekend. So they're going to roll right into it. It'll be done by the end of the season.
Thank you.
You bet. Yes.
Shane, will that save us on mobilization?
Absolutely. That is one of the big savings of why they came in so much lower was their mobile was far lower, far lower than all the other ones on that bid on the work. So we're excited to see that number.
I have to see that getting done. I drove down that road the other day. It's pretty rough.
Yes, we're all ready to see that road get done.
Any further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hemesseeth. Um, do we have a motion?
For Councilman Alsop, I move to award the construction contract for the West McNeil Roadway Improvements, City of Sholo, Project Number R 2922, to Western Grade LLC in an amount not to exceed $614,923.27 and authorize the associated budget transfers.
Do we have a second?
I am seconding the motion for Councilman Adams.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Next item under new business is consideration of approval of preliminary development plan for the flats in VMD Recreational Vehicle Park. Mr. Trigaskis.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and members of the student council. At this regular meeting of August 23rd, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero. We had Commissioner Whitehead absent and Vice Chair Barlow declaring a conflict. Recommend approval of a preliminary development plan, or PDP, submitted by Bruce Ironside of IKB Investment LLC for a project to be called the Flats at BMD Recreational Vehicle Park. This project is proposed to be located within the White Mountain Vacation Village property boundary as approximately 2.91 acres in size. Maximum proposed total unit count is 21 units. The submitted PDP indicates an overall density of 7.2 units per acre with a 19-foot wide private one-way road consisting of a 14-foot wide improved surface and modified roll curb. Ordinance 364 approved by the city council in July of 1993 established the White Mountain Vacation Village planned unit development. This PUD established the criteria for development within White Mountain Vacation Village. Included in these criteria was the allowance for private streets with a maximum width of 12 feet and 100 acres of RV park with a maximum overall density of 13.5 units per acre. Copy of Ordinance 364 has been included in the packet for review. The applicant has stated that they are proposing to develop this project as a long-term RV park or lots for small site-built homes ranging from 400 to 1,000 square feet in size. The typical lot layout indicates a minimum size of 34 by 31-foot lots with a zero-foot front yard setback, 10-foot rear setback, and five-foot side setbacks. This is consistent with the conceptual master plan, which indicates that up to 100 acres of White Mountain Vacation Village may be utilized as an RV park. A final plat will be required to be approved by the city prior to the sale of any lots within the flats at BMD Development. Staff has reviewed the submitted PDP and has found it meets the requirements of city code as well as the White Mountain Vacation Village PUD requirements. The, uh, conditions of approval as approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission are as follows. Number one, all developments shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements, including fire code, building code requirements for setbacks from property lines, and ADOT permitting requirement. Number two, the project, including number of lots and overall density, shall be developed in substantial compliance to the submitted preliminary development plan. Number three, prior to construction taking place on the subject property, the city shall approve all required infrastructure design, including street layout, drainage plans, fire hydrant locations, and water and wastewater plans. The applicant shall submit the master drainage plan with a stamped letter indicating compliance with the master drainage plan. Number four, all roads shall be surfaced in accordance with city code, Chapter 17.20, development standards, radius requirements for emergency vehicles shall be met. Number five, individual lots shall not be sold unless developed in accordance with an approved final plat. And number six, trees are of an utmost importance. As much as possible, street design, lot layouts, and unit placement shall be coordinated to save trees. With that, staff as well as the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Trigaskis. Are there any questions for staff? Do we have a motion?
Councilman Adams, I move to approve the preliminary development plan, the flats at VMD Recreational Vehicle Park, a 21-lot recreational vehicle subdivision on a portion of APN 21204143B and 212031590, subject to the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do we have a second?
I am seconding the motion for Vice Mayor Kokovas.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed to the motion? This motion passes six to zero. The next item under new business is consideration of approval of license agreement with Selco Partnership DBA as Verizon Wireless to locate cellphone tower on city property. Mr. Trigaskis.
Thank you. Uh, city staff has negotiated an agreement with Selco Partnership DBA as Verizon Wireless to locate and install a telecommunications antenna on an existing power pole located within the East Cooley Rideaway, directly north of the Navajo County facilities, located at 251 North Penrod Road. Purpose of this agreement is to allow for the installation of an eight-foot-tall antenna on top of an existing 47-foot-tall Arizona Public Service or APS power pole located in the East Cooley Rideaway. The overall combined height, including both the existing power pole and the proposed antenna, is approximately 59 feet 2 inches above the existing grade. A separate lease area outside of the rideaway is proposed for the associated equipment. This lease area is located outside of city property, meets the required setbacks from the edge of the rideaway, and is proposed to be enclosed by an eight-foot-tall ironwood fence. Using city property for telecommunications facilities is considered a permitted use. No public hearings or notice is required. Major points of the agreement are highlighted below. The initial term of the agreement is five years unless otherwise terminated and is automatically extended for three additional terms of five years each, unless otherwise terminated in accordance with Paragraph 12 of the agreement. Selco Partnership Doing Businesses Verizon Wireless will pay a license fee of $100 per month during the initial five-year term. This fee shall be adjusted annually on July 1st of each year commencing on July 1st, 2023, and shall be based on a 2.9% annual increase. Use is limited to an antenna located on an existing utility pole in the rideaway and necessary cables, conduit, wires, vaults, pertinences, and related facilities necessary for the operation of the site as outlined in Section 1.1 of the telecommunications licensing agreement and in accordance with Exhibit A. Selco Partnership Doing Businesses Verizon Wireless must remove all of its facilities upon expiration or termination of the agreement. If the city decides that it requires any portion of the licensed area for expansion of the public right-of-way or other governmental purposes, the city may require the licensee to relocate its facilities. Licensee is solely responsible for costs associated with removal and relocation of its facility. Selco Partnership Doing Businesses Verizon Wireless is required to secure general liability insurance with limits of $2 million and $2 million general aggregate XCU coverage. And finally, Selco Partnership Doing Businesses Verizon Wireless may sell, assign, or transfer the agreement, but must give the city 60 days' notice and requires the city's written consent. Uh, with that, staff as well as representative of the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Trigaskis. Are there any questions for the staff?
I have a question. How tall do we, is there a light that's going to be on it, first of all?
No, this has already been run through the FAA with the 7460 as well as our airport manager. No lighting is required.
I won't ask the second question.
Probably asking it. What's the impact, did they give you an idea of the impact on cell service data? Uh, what that might do for us? We, we're in great need of that.
We don't have those specific numbers. Uh, if the council would like, the applicant is here, he might be able to give a little bit more technical information related to that question.
I have a question for the applicant.
So this makes our fourth tower, right? Verizon's tower. We did one a couple of years ago.
Um, so within the city limits, uh, we have the existing Verizon Tower that is well number five. Uh, that agreement was approved a while back by the city council. We also, as a city, approved the new tower there at Fairway Park, uh, along Clark Road. Uh, this would be an additional tower beyond those two.
It'll help take some of the pressure off our busy weekends.
Yeah, the, the intent is obviously that it will help address cellular needs within the area.
Uh, could the applicant please come up for questions? Could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Reg Destry. I represent Verizon Wireless, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, Student Council. Thank you for, uh, having us here this evening and I certainly can answer any questions you might have. Um, I know one of the council members had requested, uh, some information about what this site will do. Um, where this site's located and with the, the size we're looking at, um, it will cover about one and a half to two miles as the primary coverage in all directions. It goes north, southwest, and southeast. Um, this should help a bit, uh, along Penrod Road is the main goal. And then along the highway as well and in that developing area, uh, there's going to be in the next five to 10 years, obviously quite a bit more commercial and industrial development in that area. In the meantime, it will help, um, it's not going to help a ton on, in other parts of town. Um, it will get over to, uh, to Deuce Club a bit, but, um, it won't cover a lot of area beyond about a mile and a half, two miles as primary coverage. We've really been looking around that area for quite a few years. We looked to get a little closer to the airport before. Um, part of the issue we've had in that area is with FAA, we couldn't build a new structure. So, um, going on an existing structure like this one, which didn't even need to be replaced, uh, is, is ideal. I mean, there's no lower impact way of providing coverage in an area. It will have both 4G and 5G on it, uh, so it will have great data speeds. Uh, there will be fiber connected to it. And all that's within the city rideaway is actually a couple of conduits and then the antennas will be on the existing pole. We have a separate agreement with the county for our ground equipment. As staff mentioned, it will be inside an ironwood fence. And so that's a separate agreement. We also will have an agreement with APS. We've been working on this particular site for a bit over a year. Uh, we had initially spoken with the county because at the time, the Cooley Rideaway was, uh, was county rideaway. It has since been transferred. It has since been transferred over to the city. And so that's why we're looking to enter into this additional agreement with the city for permission to be within your right-ofway. Are there additional questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Certainly.
When I read this, I was reading and it says you're going to put it. To me, it sounded like a single tower on the pole. But is that true? Or are you going to have different transmitter receivers on top too? So it's going to be like what we have down by Circle K and what we have in Cell 1?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Alsop. The site will have, the pole that's there right now actually has, it's got a flange up top. And we will put panel antennas on a new mount that actually gets set up on top of there. So there are multiple antennas located up there to communicate. The way APS does it, the antennas are all very closely mounted. And we've actually provided staff with a copy of the full drawings showing the way that the, it's a triangular mount, so a three-sided mount, and then the panels are flat up there. So it will provide coverage for Verizon customers, but it will be just Verizon customers and it will not be a new pole. It is the pole that's already there.
So there's not going to be anything like what we have on the other locations where it looks like a pine tree, just going to be an antenna on top of it?
Yeah, it is. The power pole that's there will have a couple of antennas on top of it.
And you said that'll take care of Penrod and hopefully along the freeway?
It should cover part, it should cover part of the highway. And we're trying to get as far east as we can. The topography there becomes a little problematic as you go east. The hill kind of gets in the way as you get east of the airport, like past Timber Mesa, Fire District and everything. Once you get past there, I don't know that it will do a whole lot, but it will help Penrod on both sides of the highway and also help the highway going east to west of it.
I know that we still do your commercials a lot when I have people go down by the new motel that's being built because there's a dead spot in there. So we're always going, can you hear me now? So I know, you know, you have other dead spots.
Unfortunately, there are several, yes. And, you know, we are working on those.
Will this wreck that dead spot on White Mountain Road?
It likely will not help with that site.
You said there's, how many, how many poles are going to be done? Three or four poles?
No, we're just going on the existing pole that's there.
You're only going to put one antenna up?
There'll be nine antennas on it.
Nine of them?
Any further questions for the applicant? Do we have a motion?
For Councilman Judd, I move to approve the agreement between the city of Sholo and Selco Partnership, DBA as Verizon Wireless, as specified by the communications license agreement and attachments, and authorize the mayor to sign the associated documents.
Do we have a second?
I am seconding the motion for Councilman Clark.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a summary of current events. Do any council members have anything to report?
I'd just like to recognize John Jarrett and police officers and sheriff's officers in Navajo County, putting together the memorial up here at City Hall for one of
I would like to thank Sholo High School for letting the kids participate in City Government Day and down in the League of Cities and Towns. I know it costs a little bit to get some people down there and buses and everything else, but I think it's a great idea and a great accomplishment for these kids to see some of the stuff that goes on. And I think they all learned a lot. And so I want to thank the chaperones and everything else for taking the kids down. Just real quick, again, thank you guys for what you've done or what you've done tonight and at the League Conference. Just real quick comment, I know there's a few people watching tonight. I don't think traffic is going to go away. There's been accidents, two or three per day in our community. And I preach this all the time. If you can quit going left in Sholo, quit going left, keep going right. But it's getting bad. I mean, being from the body shop business, it's terrible out there. And we see our fire trucks and ambulance going through town. I don't think it's going to slow down. People aren't leaving. Our mild winters are keeping everybody here. But please be patient and drive safe and turn right when you can. Thank you.
Anything further to report from council members? I've been asked to give a report on the Sholo High School. We have, we're entering into fall sports season at the moment. Today, our volleyball team, they won against a school out of the valley. Our football team is playing Snowflake this weekend, this Friday night. This is a home game at 7:00 PM. Big rivalry game for us, so anyone in the community who can come out and support, that would be great. It is also Heroes Night, so we will be honoring officers, veterans, active service members, and the so forth. So if you can come out and support, we will be wearing red, white, and blue as a student section, and I'd extend the same offer to the community. Other than that, homecoming is fast approaching. The homecoming game is September 23rd. If there's anyone watching who wants to attend that. Other than that, things at the school are going pretty usual. We'll now turn time over to Mayor Leach for his report.
Well, I already gave my report, but you could turn it over to the city manager if you'd like. Thank you.
City Manager, Mr. Muder, will now give his report.
Thank you. Just a couple of items to report. Walking Down Ranch Veterans Village will be hosting a White Mountain Veterans Tribute air event on Saturday, September 17th, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the Sholo Regional Airport. They'll have a fly-ins, motorcycle run, memorial display. They'll have a fly-in breakfast, kids' activities, live music, and vendors. And then just to announcement, the Sholo Aquatic Center is currently closed due to mechanical issues. I know some of our students witnessed that today as they were over there. We expect it to be reopened by Thursday. And in public works projects, the city's contractors, as was mentioned this evening, paving Fourth Drive, Fourth Avenue, and 24th Drive on the city paving and sidewalk connectivity project, and also some other roads north of West McNeil. Work continues on McNeil Acres Sewer Project. And the contractors, contractor over at the Frontier Park will be installing the playground splash pad equipment in the upcoming weeks. We're looking forward to the completion of that project. And ADOT will resume paving on White Mountain Road this evening. And as always, as the mayor's mentioned earlier, we appreciate everyone's patience as we do these projects and as you drive around town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muder. This brings us to scheduling of meetings. Are there any meetings to be mentioned at this time?
Not to schedule one, but just something in the future, maybe. I talked to Mayor Irwin over there in Pine Top Lakeside. We need to get together with them. I don't know if it has to be toward the end of the year or maybe the first year.
Okay.
We'll put something on the
We'll coordinate that.
And she also said here that they
Any further meetings to be discussed?
We're having a private meeting back here. We're good, thank you.
Seeing no further business, I adjourn this meeting.